I'd like to just clear, I'd like to, you know, quote a few things from the New York State book and maybe go over the order so everyone understands a little better what the order actually is and what we're doing and where we're going to go. So to start off, the executive order from the governor clearly states that all local governments in the state are required to adopt the plan by April 1st, 2021. I think the key word here is plan. There's no, no mention of, of anything exact or what you have to do. You have to come up with a plan and there's, and there's suggestions and there are requirements in the booklet in which you, which you follow to come up with this plan. So I think it's really important going forward that everyone our board and if we don't already know and people on Zoom understand that this is a, a plan that's you know, is part of the executive order. The executive orders in response to Black Lives Matter movement and the death, especially the the George Floyd and Governor Cuomo issued an executive order which requires all local governments in the state to adopt the plan by April 1st. The key, 2021, sorry. So as we continue our discussion, everyone should understand that, should understand that a finished police policy doesn't have to be in place. Public input can be ongoing. It doesn't have to be complete. There's no doubt in my mind that we'll have a plan that will satisfy the governor's order by the deadline. To date, we have participated in the county's efforts and by we, I mean, I mean, Officer in Charge Larry Burke and also Trustee Foley. We've participated in the county's efforts and followed them. We've also contacted other, again Larry and Trustee fully contacted other municipalities to see how they're tackling the order. We are drafting, we are drafting a survey to hand deliver to all residents, a survey which will also be available digitally. We have hired Lexi Poll and are in the process of updating our police policy. A policy which will be available in draft form for a public comment as soon as possible. We have not yet, but we'll be scheduling a public hearing and a public meetings. We will then consider public comment incorporate, we feel is appropriate in the code. As you can see, there's a plan. And as we closer to the deadline, we can assess where we are and what we feel can be completed. Of course, leaving time to draft and send a formal plan to the state. So I, I wanted to just show where we are with our plan so that it's clear that we haven't been doing anything as some have suggested, not on our board, but elsewhere. So I just wanted to clear that up or at least put out there what actually order was and what we're trying to accomplish and what's in motion. A little about the order. If you read the order and information sent by the state, it is obvious that the order is directed towards larger municipalities with diverse communities, neighborhoods and large police forces. As you well know, we are not a diverse village. We do not have distinct neighborhoods or communities within our village and then we had, and we have an all time, an all part-time police department with one officer on duty during each of three shifts. So it's hard, you know, in the, in the order, it's to go reach out to community leaders and neighborhoods and obviously it's a little tricky for us. So from the booklet that was sent, the order states that community dialogue should be a fact-based and honest dialogue about the public safety needs of our community. Each community must envision for itself the appropriate role of the police. Policies must be developed to allow the police to do their job, to protect the public, and these policies must meet with local communities' acceptance. The purpose of, of the New York State Police Reform and Reinvention Collaborative is to foster trust, fairness and legitimacy within communities throughout our state and to address, address any racial bias disproportionate policing of communities of color. Again, that's hard for us, you know, to address that since we really don't have distinct neighborhoods or communities. Next bullet is, it's work, the work of the collab, the collaborative will be particularly valuable in communities that through bitter experience have come to mistrust law enforcement. I don't think that's the case in the village, not that I'm aware of. So, you know, it's another one where you can see how the direction is, you know, where the direction came from or what it's intended for. All communities should be asking what goals they want their police department to accomplish. All participants should recognize that funds are limited, that personnel must be trained and managed for the tasks they are given and the organizational change is rarely swift. This is, I'm quoting this from the book. It's not, that's something I came up with. Then I'd like to add, much of the work that you needed as you go through the, go through the booklet and the order is, is clearly on the shoulders of the officer in charge, reviewing policy, seeing where changes can be made and adopting policies. A lot of it is, you know, his interaction with community members. And so this is a huge undertaking for our part, for a part-time officer with limited resources. And I feel we're really extremely lucky to have Officer Burke in this role and willing to take it on. He's, he's going to be put in tons of hours and I'm sure that he's not being paid for that. He's, you know, can only work so many hours and he's also an on-duty officer and he has his other duties which he's taken care of. So, you know, we should keep in mind that, you know, and be grateful for the officer in charge, Larry Burke. I think he did a tremendous job and, you know, I'm sure that Kathleen can comment on that in a bit. So before I turn the discussion over to Trustee Foley, it was working with Officer Burke on the police policy and Trustee Murphy and my wife Stephanie Hawkins on the survey. I would like to once again assure everyone that this board takes the executive order seriously and that we are working in our capacity to meet the deadline. Also, I assure you that the public input will be solicited and made as easily, as easily accessible as possible so all can participate. The heated discussion or clash at our previous meetings was not about complying to the executive order, rather a disagreement on the speed in which we move forward and the urgency of compliance. This is my view of it. If you believe as I do that this executive order is important, then you should agree that we should take it at a pace we can handle and do it properly. That all said, Kathleen, the floor is yours to give us an update on the, on your work Lexi Poll and also with the survey if you'd like.
Sure. Am I unmuted now?
What's that?
Can you hear me? Okay.
You're good.
Okay.
Floor is yours.
Excellent. I mean, I don't have a lot to add because you covered it pretty thoroughly, Dave. Tomorrow Larry and I enter the first training session where we actually dig into policy with Lexi Poll and learn how to use the software and start looking at policies. So that moves us forward on getting closer to having something to present to the public. We'll have a better sense of how long that takes after we get in and learn how to do it. We have looked at a variety of surveys across the state and I will say that what we're seeing across the state, to your point, Dave, is, and especially even here in our county, with the larger processes, a real frustration with rushed timeline and lack of substantive engagement with focus groups and panels and, and individual community members, very low participation in surveys and a lot of reuse of surveys around the same survey getting reused around and around the state. The county survey shows up in at least four municipalities that I've seen and sort of cut and paste. And I think it's really important, as we've all discussed, to make the outreach and community engagement we do very much Cold Spring. And to make sure that we are, although, although we are predominantly white village for sure, we do have people of color here. We do have LGBTQIA folks. We have immigrants and we want to make sure that we're engaging all of those people in meaningful ways with meaningful feedback. So as we get going on the survey and, and have a plan for launching it, we'll come back with more. That's kind of where we are right now, but I appreciate you taking the time, Dave, to let folks know where we are in, that we are making progress. And if folks want to have a look at the document, the day, the, the document that David's reading from is publicly available. If you Google EO 203 and guidance, you'll be able to look at that document for yourself. There are a lot of great resources there. Is there anything else that you wanted added? To that?
Can I, can I just jump in for a second here? I did want to just reiterate what Kathleen and Dave said about the, the survey. There is a lot of, I mean, as I read through the, the executive document, be honest with you, there's a lot about this is the great things we've done so far. Blah, 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 in the state. And then there's a section on, these are possible questions and we are going through them. Stephanie Hawkins and Kathleen and myself are going through them and looking at all these suggested things that we should ask and determining whether or not these are appropriate for this particular municipality. We will meet again with Larry on, was it Monday, Kathleen? I think, to go again over some of the things that we're not sure actually should be involved in our, in our survey. But one of the things that I wanted to bring up is how important it is to the three of us right now that the survey gets out to as many people as possible and that it is secure so that, you know, we're not, we don't have people from any old place answering our surveys. We're going to make sure that it's coded and it's clear. We're also going to make sure that we reach everybody, whether they're on a computer, not on a computer, afraid to come near us, you know, don't really want to get involved. They'll be coded, but not, you won't be able to trace it back. We really, really encourage everybody to please get involved. We will go door to door. You'll have an option for doing it online. You'll have an option for doing paper. It's important to us that we get as many as possible and to understand that everybody that we do get in this, in this survey, everybody who responds to it will be people that we need to respond to, Village of Cold Spring residents, Village of Cold Spring merchants, whoever else we determine as we go along needs to be a part of this community and not just anybody from any place. It's important for us to do it that way. So that's, that's some of the things we're working on. And we do have sort of a timeline. So we are pushing through this hopefully as quickly as possible and we'll have something in your hands within a couple of weeks.
It's important, it's important to me to balance what Fran has just suggested with the idea that we don't, I, I, speaking for me, I want to be sure that we're not constructing artificial barriers to participation because one of the things I think we need to be sensitive to is some of the very folks that were meant to be listening to may feel marginalized and we want to make sure that they feel safe and able to participate in a way that if they wish to retain anonymity, they can, and that they feel comfortable accessing the survey. So that's, that is foremost in my mind that, that we do everything we can to reduce barriers.
Can I ask a question about the survey? To whoever? Is there a separate part, part of the survey for people who may be our visitors to town? Because I know that, you know, our police department does interact with visitors, maybe sometimes more so than, than residents and I, just in terms of the tourism traffic. And I'm wondering if that aspect is something that is going to be considered or if that's sort of a separate project.
That's something that we discussed the other day. We decided that that was not something at this point that we wanted to do this. We want to keep this as Village of Cold Spring, merchants of Cold Spring as possible to go around and deal with people who are here one or two days a year or a couple of days a year. You know, no matter how they react with the police department at this point, at this point, we need to get this done. We need to get it done sooner. You know, maybe at a future date, there'll be a time and a place for that, but for this particular exercise to get this through and get it done. We, we have chosen to keep this within the village as much as we can.
I do, I think that we need to acknowledge that there is a, a difference of opinion that we need to, to work through on that. I, I have a different perspective on that. I, I think that there is value in hearing from people who pass through our community. And I think that segregating, segregating visitors from residents and also people who work in our village who aren't necessarily shopkeepers, but you know, I think about teachers at Haldane who are stakeholders via our youth. So I would say that that is a discussion that has been had, but I don't think we've reached a I don't feel that we've reached a conclusion on whether or not it is, it is appropriate to completely exclude the voices of people who, who interact in our village and with our department as non-residents. It's a conversation that needs to be had, I think.
I think one of the things that we need to keep in mind is the executive order and the order. And this whole reform is based on a community and the community working together, together and feeling gathering a trust in the police force and a collaborative effort on this. I, I don't, didn't see anything in there reaching out and having, you know, having, getting information from passersby or whatever. I, I do see the value in if people are working here, maybe or, and that may be included, but as far as like just opening this up to like general public for anyone to comment, I don't think that's what the executive order is about. In fact, I know that's not what it's about.
Well, I, I wasn't referring to just passersby, but like Catherine, sorry Kathleen said, you know, other kinds of stakeholders, people who are in, you know, who are a part of our community in, in various ways. Just as something that might, as a, as a population that might have valuable input for us.
Um, can I step in on that question? Basically, again, looking at the timeframe that we have and looking at the amount of work that has to be done by April 1st. I was on a Zoom meeting today with the county and it actually had, some of the survey people came on in the sub panels and I believe it was the people of color also stated that they would like to see the deadline be extended by six months due to, due to not be able to meet and really kind of gather as much information as we can on the executive order. As of right now, from what I'm understanding, the governor is refusing. So the governor's office or somebody is always says, no, that April 1st is a dead, is a hard deadline. So for me and for my, for my department or actually for the Village of Cold Spring Police Department, I want, would rather do the residents, the merchants, the people who work here first. Let's get that done and collect whatever information we can. And then at a later date, again, I think as Fran mentioned, we can open it up to, to visitors, people that come up in the summer, people that pass through as we go, as we explode in the, in the warmer months for people going hiking and people coming into the village. So I'm not looking to exclude them. But I mean, because we're running on a time schedule, I really think we need to do the residents and the merchants, the people that work here kind of first and get that done.
That's, that's valuable feedback, Larry. I think in the survey group, we can have additional conversation. I see value in both elements that have been raised, both ideas that have been raised. One thing that I think about is that we have so much electronic capacity with surveys and the town, for example, the town comprehensive plan. At the opening question was, are you a resident or non-resident? And first you work from an assumption that people are being honest when they're participating in the survey. I think we have to, we would have to start with that. But are you a resident, this set of questions? Are you a non-resident, that set of questions? You know, it's, it's called a branch logic survey. That, that seems to be something that we ought to consider. And maybe if it's not now, to Larry's point, I want to, I, I really hope that we get that perspective at some point because I think it's important to understand how, because we are such, we are, we are a tourist, a tourist community with such high volume and the folks coming to visit Cold Spring and who pass through Cold Spring may not look like most of us in Cold Spring. If we're talking about, if we're talking about issues related to race, we should be talking to people who don't look like us. So that's, that's my two cents. I'm really grateful, Dave, that you raised, made the space to have this conversation this evening and to have an update. I appreciate it.
Welcome. I think we should decide on the, on the scope of the survey as soon as possible, if you're trying to create one, because if, you know, if you don't, then the scope is, you could be discussing a lot of things that the board maybe as a whole is not interested in moving forward with.
The survey committee is meeting again Monday afternoon at two, so we will, we will.
Can I join?
You can't, then we'll have a forum. So you can't. I'm sorry.
Okay. I was wondering.
But, but please give, but please send feedback. And if anyone else wishes to comment, my trustee.foley, F as in Franco L E Y at, at coldspringnewyork.gov. I'd appreciate it.
I'd like to poll the board right now, whether you feel, who you feel the survey should go out to. Should it just be residents? Should it be residents and people that work here and have shops here? Or should it be just the general survey that can, anyone can answer?
So I'm in favor of a branch logics survey that Kathleen suggested where you have options.
So you're saying everything.
So can we, can you, sorry, can we just structure the, the resolution, the motion differently? So we know what we're saying yes and no to?
It's not a motion. It's not, it's a poll.
He's asking us to.
He's asking for a poll. He's asking for a poll.
Sorry, I thought we were making a motion, Dave.
First would be just the residents, which that seems, in my reading and understanding of the order is what it should be because it's about the community and how the police and the community, you know, work together. The second would be, the, would be the community, all the residents plus the shop owners and the employees. And the third option would be basically you send out a survey, however you want to do it, that everyone could answer. Whether you split it up or you have some, something that states it's a resident or not or whatever, it would be a, you know, a full-blown survey to whoever would like to comment on whatever you come up with in your survey. I basically want, I want to stay with either the first or the second, you know, I can see the value in, in the shop owners and the, and the workers in the village. Marie, would you like to take a?
Definitely number one. Number two, if it was restricted to merchants and merchant employees, I, that would be okay with me. Extending it to the large population of Haldane employees, which is teachers and staff and groundskeepers and whatnot. I would, I would say, no, I, I don't see those people participating in the community much at all. So I would say the first or the second, but not extending to Haldane, which has the largest employee, number of employees in the village.
Well, if they're around our, if they're around the community's children every day, aren't they an integral part of it?
A lot, a lot of the children in Haldane are not Village of Cold Spring residents.
Yeah, very small.
So, so I can, I, I see value in a, a larger data set. You know, it's, it's hard to get people to participate in surveys anyway. A larger data set in which you, you drill, then drill down by resident, non-resident. I, I work from the assumption that people are honest and are willing to say whether they're a resident or not.
Can we, can I make a suggestion?
Can we take this to?
Can we pass this back to the survey committee to discuss on Monday?
Sure.
And bring it back?
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, I mean, I was under the impression that we were pretty much had a path that we knew we were going on and now suddenly it seems to be spreading. And so we need to go back and revamp this. We are meeting Monday at two. Larry will be there to run some questions by him and also just to iron this down and get it going. So if you don't mind, can we pass it back to them and we, I will report back or Kathleen will report back at our next meeting?
Absolutely. I, I, but I didn't want was you to, you know, keep working on something that the board wasn't, you know, in favor of doing. So that's, that's fine with me. I think the one thing to keep in mind is what this order is about and, and read the booklet again and read the executive order and understand what it is. It's not a survey the, for everybody or to, you know, to comment on our police interactions that they've had or some of them went by, they got a ticket and wasn't happy. It's about, it's about the community and the community and where they want to see their police. It's not, not about, you know, visitors at this point, not this one, and not to say that there's no value in that. But for this purpose and this executive order, it's about the community and it's about the residents and the neighbors and, you know, like I said, and the, if you're in a bigger city or whatever, it's the neighborhoods and interaction and how police, you know, work in those areas. We don't have those. Just keep in mind the order. The, the order is about the community and police relations and, and, you know, reinventing, as they say. So thank you for your time on that too, all three people. I know that's, it's not an easy one. Hopefully come up some quickly and they'll touch all the bases. And, and then we'll find volunteers and we'll get it out there.
Thank you.
Just since I, since I can't be on the survey committee, I just, you know, I'm happy to send you guys my thoughts directly. But just, I would love to be able to approach just with the idea that, yes, we're adhering to the executive order, but there's a purpose behind the executive order. And, and to try and keep that in mind and that, you know, in that community doesn't necessarily just mean residents. It means everyone who is impacted by our police force.
But I don't think that's the executive, and I know that's not what this executive order is about. And we're, we're not taking a survey for additional information. We're taking a survey to comply with the executive order, which is about, you know, specifically about the relationships in our community and with the residents. So.
And, and I just, I just, I would just like to state one thing, just being the officer in charge for almost four years now, just to give you some, some data on any complaints that have come in on any type of rate, racial, racial or anything like that with any of my officers, there's been, there's been almost none. I mean, there's only been one incident that I had to do an investigation on that I cannot bring up at this time, but the, but the board knows about it. But at this point, out of the four years, there's been none. So I'm, I'm not saying that we're not, you know, there's no room for improvement anywhere. But again, we need to stick at this time, we need to stick to the community residents who we patrol every day. Those are the people that we keep safe, the shopkeepers, the, the homeowners, the residents at this time. And we can always open it up at a later time to visitors, hikers and whatever other people you want to add in to give us any type of information that they have. Right now I'm kind of in agreement with Dave that it really needs to be because we're, again, we're on a short timeframe that you need to do it that this way. Again, I'm not, not, no, put my foot down on it, but I mean, we really need to, to move on this because we have a short, short timeframe.
Okay, Fran, and you guys and Kathleen and Stephanie can discuss further and and then let us know what your, you know, as soon as you can, your decision and how things are going.
Thank you.
Also, thank you for all the work that'll go into working on Lexi Poll, Larry. I know it's a big load for you and, and everyone else actually. So thank you all. All right. Anything else on that? We'll move along here. So the second is authorize the mayor to sign a 2001 renewal agreement with Managed Technologies. There's no increase in per workstation monthly maintenance fee. Like to make a motion to, well, somebody else can make the motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize Dave to sign the 2021 renewal agreement with Managed Technologies.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Next we have, next we have a request from the Girl Scout troop 1091 to clean up Tots Park on February 15th, weather permitting. I think that's a wonderful offer. I know if it's a little early, I haven't been over there recently. I'm sure it needs to be cleaned up a bit. So as I'll make a motion to grant the request to the Girl Scout troop 1091 for a cleanup.
Second?
Any discussion?
Yeah. Well, I just, I'd like to ask permission to work with the Tots Park volunteers on making a safe reopening plan in conjunction with this cleanup.
Can I ask a question? Heidi, you had mentioned something about you were going to work with them and with the top park committee on the cleanup and on signage. And I didn't understand what the signage situation was.
Well, I wanted to ask if, you know, if we're able to go forward with opening the park, if I could work with the volunteers. I haven't, you know, I just reached out to them to get in touch. But with the idea that we could put up, we could figure out maximum occupancy. We can have signs about requiring masks. We can have hand sanitizer stations, things like that in terms of making it able to, to safely be open for kids to use once, once the cleanup has been, has been completed.
I think, and sorry if I'm yapping too much, our original thoughts on that was not so much the distance and the masks is that the toys are not cleaned, they're not sanitized. And if you bring little children, and I have tons of little children in my family, their mouths and their hands go all over everything and then their hands go in their mouth. So if they're on the swings or on the slides and their hands are on it and somebody isn't sanitizing right after them. And yeah, maybe we tell somebody you have to clean up after your kid, but if you don't, and I bring my kid in there and my kid touches something and puts their hands in their mouth, then it's our park and it's our responsibility. And that was the basic reason why we closed it to begin with unless we can guarantee sanitizing on a regular basis, which we can't.
Well, I was hoping I. Well, I was hoping I sorry, I was hoping I could work with the volunteers on that and in terms of a sanitizing program. I was, you know, especially if we have sanitizing stations, think about like when someone goes to gym and wipes down the equipment afterwards. Um you know, that that we have PPE, you know, provided to make it easy for people to do that and that um Touch Park volunteers would, you know, work on a schedule to 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 rotate and um and make sure it stays sanitary. Um and that parents take that responsibility, too, you know, it's very easy for a parent to, you know, grab a sanitizing wipe and wipe it down, but the idea is more coming up with a plan um and and then getting approval from the board if um it's something that you're open to.
No, um I think it's uh definitely worthwhile if you come up with a plan, I mean, we can always say that's not not worth it, that doesn't seem right, whatever, you know, but to come up with one, if you come up with one where the you know, that works and we agree on it, that's fine, so if you'd like to work on a plan and submit it to the board for review, I'm 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 fine with that, everyone else.
I'm really grateful for it, Heidi. Um I think it's really important that we look at CDC guidelines that have been updated since we were dealing with this in the spring. We know a lot more about surface transmissions than we did before. Um taking note that the Haldane playgrounds have been open since school began again. Um uh I think that I think that we've learned a lot since before then, and I think our kids need to be, our kids need to be outside and play together as much as as much as they can safely, so thank you for taking that up.
Billy, thank you.
If I can go back to the motion that's on the floor.
Sorry. Ah, the Girl Scouts.
No, the status of the park, the weeds are as tall as I am. And uh there's a lot.
Very high, come on.
Nice.
And and there's a significant amount of leaves there. Somehow the do not do not pass uh yellow tape was removed. I I I can't, it's probably within the last week. At least it's been removed from the north gate, it's still there on the south gate. Uh the north gate is still padlocked, I didn't go around to look at the south gate. But my point was, the totlot is in need of of uh weeding and and raking of leaves, so I heartily endorse the Girl Scouts efforts. I I just don't know whether or not February fifteenth is a reasonable date just because of the cold weather.
I think they're choosing it because that's President's Day weekend. Uh and sorry, President's Day weekend and school is closed. Do we have anybody from the Girl Scouts on the call?
Hi, Kristin Amato, I'm I'm here. Positive. Hi, and we chose that date, yeah, because um it is, uh the girls are off from school, there i- isn't any snow on the ground at this point and um you know, it's they've done other cleanups in this kind of weather before, and it's worked out really well, they were masked and had gloves. And so it kind of helped with, you know, keeping them at a distance and um and so they were fine with that in the past. Um our thought is also there's so much to clean up that we might not be able to get all of it done, but at least we're making some progress towards it, and it might have to happen a a few times in um after their February fifteenth date um in order to actually get it to the point where it's safe for young kids to come in again and play because it's just um, you know, ticks could be in those leaves and um I I think usually the cleanup happens a little too late, even when it is open um by volunteers, so we were just thinking, let's get uh an early start on it if we can.
Kristin, what are you what are you gonna do with the um yard debris that you like the the weeds, which are tall?
I um I contacted um the village uh crew and asked them if they would be willing to do a pickup like they do for the Christmas trees and and they said that they would be willing if we bagged everything and were in contact with them.
So they've given you permission to use, uh I'm guessing, plastic bags or paper bags?
Um you know, I I will double check with him, but I I was assuming that it would be the paper, uh but I'll I'll check with them and see what they prefer.
Okay, thank you. And and this is only within the the wooden fenced area, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, what 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 grade are your girls in?
Um they're in third grade.
Right on, I have eighth grade Girl Scouts, um so if you need any big girls to help with moving objects or.
Yeah, great, I mean, yeah, we could we could chat about that.
The little girls love to be with the big girls.
Yes.
Okay, did we uh actually vote on this one?
No.
No.
That we have a motion uh to approve the cleanup and date, and uh there was a second.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kristin.
Kristen.
Thank you.
Thank you, your girls.
Okay, uh next approval of bills.
I make a motion to approve batch number five eight six seven in the amount of forty one thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and fifteen cents.
I will second that motion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you once again to everyone that edits those. It's a big time saver. Um next is a we have a slew of uh minutes to approve here. Um I'll make a motion to approve uh October twenty eighth uh two thousand twenty village board meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, sorry, uh Kathleen and Heidi can't.
We weren't there.
Oh, no, sorry.
We were there, we're some.
Never mind, I withdraw my aye.
Nice, um next we have uh I'll make a motion to accept the minutes, approve the minutes for November twelfth uh two thousand twenty village board meeting.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
No, not I, not I, not I, sorry, it's it's automatic.
Um and now, get ready.
I'm ready, I'm ready.
Um I'll make a motion to approve uh the village board minutes of January fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Go, Kathleen.
Next is I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January twelfth, two thousand twenty-one village board meeting.
Second.
Kathleen's got that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um and finally, uh I'll make a motion to approve the minute village board of trustees minutes of January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
January twelfth, first.
And is it twelfth or?
There's two, there there's twelfth, there's the twelfth and the fourteenth, two more.
Oh, I didn't do the twelfth, okay, sorry, uh January twelfth, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And finally now, uh approve the minutes of village board of trustees, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Hey, um before we get into our code update, if we have uh any public comment, I will open it for that. Is Michael on or who's running?
Oh, Michael is on, I don't see anyone raising their hands, either on the uh Zoom or on the screen.
Okay. Okay, so we will close that part of the meeting. Um the second uh part is code update review, um and we're uh continuing with short-term rentals and fences. Anyone that's uh would like to stay on, please do. Uh we won't be taking any public comment um after the or after that section of the meeting. So that said, um.
Sorry, uh this is um a public comment that unfortunately I cut the 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 ability to raise the hand is not there. Could I could I make, could I say something?
If you identify yourself.
Yes, Simon Butt, I'm a new resident uh in the village, um I just wanted to.
What's your address, sorry?
Just for the minute. Thirteen Parrot Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Thanks, yeah, I I just um just on this uh police thing, um I I'm 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 I would like to support uh having read the executive order that it specifically speaks about reaching out to communities plural that are served by the police and addressing the needs of those communities. At no stage, as far as I can see, does it actually include um residents or speak about residents. And those communities, I I think uh really have been identified, and there may be more, that it includes residents. It of course includes folks who work here and visitors to to the village. Um a- a- and so any stakeholder uh reaching out to stakeholders, uh the more you include, the more data you gather, the more you can drill down into that data. Um I would also note that um it it talks about creating a plan uh where you adopt the and and input the recommendations of the examination of the police activities as well as the input of the communities. And my concern would be that if we're writing a plan prior to uh receiving the input of the communities, then it would be difficult to um difficult to include that at the time of writing the plan. And and from a perspective of increasing workload, I would have thought that uh changing the plan afterwards would be more difficult than including the input in the first place. And my last comment would be that I I find it a little concerning when the police representative is advocating uh for limiting the scope of of this. Just the visuals of that um to me seem um seem inappropriate uh rather than opening it up and and welcoming possible change. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, I really appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to address that. Can you guys hear me?
Sure, Larry.
Yeah, um I in no way am I stating that I'm not open, I would not be willing to change or open up a responses from anybody, including tourism's, including tourists or people that come in, I did not say that. I'm all for change, as long as it's for the better and the better the betterment of serving the communities, the community that we actually uh protect. Um and again, that would include hikers and and people that travel up for the day and come by boat or come by the train. And I am, you know, my myself and my officers are definitely uh engaging in that, and we will continue to engage in that. But uh the comment that I was making that I want specifically do it for this community for the timeframe that we have because we cannot, uh I don't think we have enough time to open it up to everybody. Um even in the county, we spoke when we spoke to, when they spoke today at the Zoom meeting, they wanted to keep it to Putnam County. They did it, they did accept um accept other uh surveys from other people and other comments, and they looked at those things. But again, for the policy that the governor wants us to look at and to uh update or reinvent or change is uh specifically is going to be for the Cold Spring Police Department, not the county PD that that our residents and and the people that uh will come to Cold Spring, that we will be uh protecting and the residents. Um and again, I just would like to state that there's no way I'm just keeping it to them, I would never, I would never be that um closed in by any means, and I and I don't believe I ever have been. Um but I do appreciate the concerns and I my door is always open if you want to contact me by phone or email. I will get back to you on any other specific questions that anybody in this uh and that's on the meeting now, that may want to ask me at a later date.
Could I ask a question, Dave?
Sure.
Is it our mandate to protect only residents? Is it the police department's mandate to only protect residents?
It seems like you have an answer to that question, or why?
I'm asking, I'm asking.
I don't believe and I don't think you believe that there is a mandate that we only protect residents, so
I don't.
Why are you asking?
Well, because it seems as if we we have a sort of a um a narrowing view of who it is that is served by our department.
Well, Kathleen, wait a second, uh I'm going to take offense to that right now. Uh basically, uh I told you I protect everybody, but the main concern for the Cold Spring Police Department, I do believe, is the people that live here, uh as as I everybody in general. I mean, I'm in law enforcement over thirty-two years, I protect on even when I'm off duty and I'm not in and I'm not in my uh in my community, I might always look and protect people that may need help. So um do not, you know, squeeze me into just saying that I'm only want to protect the residents. There's no way if I ever would ever say that or state that or have any of my officers do that. I'm just stating for what the governor put out there and what the timeframe that we have. You know, this is what we're kind of, you know, kind of boxed into at this time. So I'm I'm not saying it's, I'm just protecting the residents and and the people.
I know you're not, Larry, I know you're not, Larry, I I the reason I pressed you to clarify that is because I felt I was concerned that that was what was coming across, and I know that's not who you are or what you mean. Um I just electronic ser- surveys are, when surveys are electronic, it's really, it's quite easy to to it doesn't add more time to to add more.
Once again, I guess, you know, I guess we gotta, we we need to, you know, find out at at the survey, what what you'd like to do after the survey, and then I would poll the uh I would take a vote or whatever we ought to do uh on on how we want to proceed because we're not reading this, and I appreciate gentlemen that uh just commented, I don't read it like that, I read commi- communities differently. Um and that I think we can agree to disagree on that. I believe the mandate is set one way, and you believe um that it should be expanded. And uh and we'll we'll vote on that and and see where we go with that. You know, because this is the board decision and it's the village that's doing this, you know, that we're working on this for and with and and with Larry. And from everything I've read in the executive orders, it's about about the police and how they interact with communities, meaning most of the time, like diverse communities and neighborhoods in a village or a city itself. Not communities nationwide or or, you know, and, you know, getting input from people that aren't here very often. I think the most important thing is how we treat and how we are working with the people we act that you actually are coming in contact for and who are actually paying your salary every day while you're working.
I don't think it should be about paying your salary.
No, no, if you go back to specific and what the governor kind of wants to do is old school. Old school policing is community policing. That's the police officer that walks up and down the block, that goes to the neighborhoods, that goes to the schools, that goes into the businesses, that makes themselves known and and makes themselves known and sees the officers on the street every day, whether it be somebody coming into the into Cold Spring to have lunch, or whether it be a resident or go up to the school uh when they have a soccer game or football game, just to show that you're out there and you're doing what you're supposed to be doing, protecting the community policing, that's what this community policing basically is, and we all, you know, should know that. And I think that's exactly what he's going by and what he wants to go back to that. And again, we're we're I I and I don't mean to want to cut anybody off or anything, we're spending a lot of time on the on this, which what we should, but let's wait till we meet on Monday, we can discuss the survey, and if you want to open it up to everybody, I have no problem doing that. We can, again, Kathleen, we can do that that thing that you said where the county did, are you a resident? Yes, here are certain questions, are you a non-resident, here are certain questions. Let's meet on Monday, let's decide how we're going to go forward with this and uh and get as much input as we can by everybody.
Great.
Uh Dave, Liza Starbuck has her hand up.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, everybody, um it sounds like everyone's really passionate about this, and um we are so fortunate to have a group of representatives and trustees that care so much and um uh Officer Burke, who is also very passionate about this job. Um and I I just think um I I think this is a wonderful opportunity for us as a community to discuss what uh we want our police department to represent. Um and in terms of, I I seem like Dave did touch upon the fact that um the order was inspired by or or um turn, you know, the incentive behind it was to make sure that our police departments are doing what is right and have have the correct protocol and responses in terms of racial um issues, uh which is hard to read in a community that is not as diverse um like ours, but there is diversity here, I think. Um and I think this is a wonderful opportunity to just get a temperature on what um our community wants our police force to represent on the street, um how it approaches. Even even I'm sure the residents have opinions about how they how we want our police force and department to approach minorities on the street. And um I'm so I I think that uh you know, whether you survey, I I agree with Kathleen that um the more people you survey, the better chances you'll get data that's actually valuable, because I've, you know. because I've, you know, tried to put out surveys and it's very hard to get people to respond. And I think having people door to door will be useful and help get the residents' feedback. But I think the more data you can collect in sending out a survey, the better. And I hope that its focus and goal will be on figuring out what our police department should represent in terms of the community. So that's all I have to say.
I just, you know, thank you, Liza. I agree with you, and I think we're in agreement that it's, you know, how the community feels and how they have, how we should interact. I think the one thing that I would disagree with is getting more information on a survey doesn't necessarily make it a better survey. If you're, if the survey has, if there's a form to the survey, if there's a reason and a goal for the survey, then it doesn't necessarily mean that you just gather more information, because if the information isn't, isn't directly connected to the order and to the goal of the, of the plan, then, then I don't, you know, then I don't find it, it would be more useful. It might be more useful somewhere down the line or in understanding the police or whatever, you know, or getting more information, that's fine. But, you know, for what we're doing now in this exercise, you know, that's not what we're, that's not what the executive order is about. So, I mean, we could broaden the plan and ask questions about, I don't know, a lot of different things, you know.
Can I have a?
Unrelated, because we now have the time to do it. It's not going to make a better plan.
Can I ask a quick question, just as a response to that? Is there going to be an opportunity before the survey goes out for, like, Officer Burke to sort of present to the community, like, what the protocol is? I mean, it's hard to answer a survey when you don't know what, what you're working with a little bit. So that's, that's part of the.
That was, that was kind of my, that was the cart before the horse that you referenced in your letter. My, what I had hoped to do is actually get a policy so that people could look at it, to see what protocol and what people actually, and what policy was.
No, no.
Exactly, exactly what you're saying right now is what I, what I was hoping for and tried to express the last meetings, but didn't go over too well.
And more about history, just like, and I may have missed, maybe Officer Burke can respond to me. Is there data, for instance, like, based on how many, you know, like, what, what the racial division of people who get pulled over by our officers are? Is that kind of data collected or available? Can you, can you present it and share it with the public, or no?
No, this was discussed amongst other chiefs in Putnam County. There, there's a fine line when you're dealing with that, number one. Number two, data-wise, with the way we put in our tickets, if we write you a ticket or if we don't write you a ticket, if we don't write you a ticket, it's a verbal warning, that's a verbal warning at the vehicle. There'll be no place to put, you know, who I stopped, when I stopped, what race did I stop in the tracks. That's, that's led by the state of New York, which is the system that we use to write moving violations, and I'm just talking about moving violations in general. There's, there's no specific place where it has a race. And then we also discussed amongst the chiefs that if you were to ask that question to somebody, that person that you pulled over may take offense to it, stating that, okay, you know, I may not look a certain color or whatever, and how dare you ask me? So there, it's a very fine line that we look at. I know in the past it was mentioned by somebody on Facebook, I believe it was, or the Phillips Town Org, that go by on a Monday night and see who the Cold Spring Village Police are pulling over by looking at people coming to court. And I say, and I'm, and I think that was a misrepresentation, because not only is it the Village of Cold Spring police officers that are there for court, the state police are there, because they pull all the people in the village. The county police are also there sometimes, because they pull people over in the jurisdiction of the village, number one. And number, and number two, you know, I've been on the force now since 2013, and it is no specific, in my opinion, there's been no specific group that has been targeted or ticketed or, or singled out in a, in a wide margin since I've been here. And I pretty much am at, I'm at court every Monday, I mean, until COVID came, and we're not, we're not able to do court right now. If that answered your question, if not, I'm open to any suggestions you may have going forward, you know.
That, yeah, that answers my question, and I can see how complicated things could get trying to track that kind of data, and certainly asking people what their races and/or assuming is tricky and dangerous. So that makes good sense. All right, that's, that's all I have. I do think that, to Kathleen's point, like, if people are driving through and coming to visit, and I have, you know, customers who come to Main Street, who live in Garrison, that offer a more diverse pool potentially, and they come repeatedly and they're part of the community, but they don't live in Cold Spring and they don't pay taxes in Cold Spring Village specifically. But I would consider them part of my community, so I would hope that they would be included potentially in the survey as well.
Yes, make us fast suggestion on that, and I know we're, we're spending too much time on this. I would highly recommend that maybe summer, fall time, when all, when the village is inundated with visitors, we do a separate survey just for visitors, and all the shop owners can give them out to all of your customers and just say, why do you come to Cold Spring? What do you like about us? What don't you like about us? What is good? What is bad? Blah, 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 all that kind of stuff. A separate survey for separate, for people who are visiting us, who are just here for, you know, a couple of times a year, whatever. I think, I think that will capture what we need to know about, about visitors who come.
Sorry, but I just think there is a big distinction between visitors who come regularly, like from Garrison or Beacon or Peekskill or wherever, versus, you know, tourists who come once or twice a year. And I just want to put that out there that I'm, you know, I think, I don't want to give the impression that I'm saying everyone everywhere should have input on the survey, but I do think there, there is an important distinction between people who are a part of our community, because they visit us, because they're our neighbors, you know, like Garrison or Beacon or wherever.
Or commute through our municipality.
Yeah, and just that it's an opportunity to get more input from communities of color, from, you know, just people who might have a different experience with the police department than say, you know, Fran or Marie or me or Kathleen or Dave, and that's my point.
And I think it's a great point, Heidi. Again, I welcome every, every comment that comes my way. I'm wide open on that. I would like to get every, you know, all input will be, will be looked at and all input will be considered on a grand, on a grand level. It's just I'm really, really pressed with the timeframe that the governor gave us, and I cannot believe, and again, I was on the meeting today, and the people of color from Putnam County said we would like to have a little more time before we had to put this all together, because it seemed kind of, they thought it would seem kind of rushed, as we all did due to the fact of, of, you know, the virus and not be able to meet with people in different groups, and you can Zoom this time, I can Zoom that time. So unfortunately, the governor's hard knowing that. So again, we just want to, I'm trying to, trying to get it, I'm not trying to rush it, but I definitely do have to get something up there by the deadline. And again, we can change it as soon as it goes up there. We can change whatever we need to change. It's what Kathleen said in the past, it's a living document. We're going to always want change, and I'm going to always want to change it to the better of the police department, the community, and be as transparent as we most, as we possibly can.
Thank you, Larry. Is there anyone else, public comment? Got a little deeper than we wanted to there.
I think it's good to get deep.
Good to get deep if there's, you know, we, we had, we had gone through, I mean, if you want to spend the rest of the night talking about how we're going to do a survey, when we had settled on that we were going to let the three board, three members actually figure out the survey and then come back to us, or we can keep talking about it if you'd like.
I'm sorry, I must have missed where we decided that they, that that would happen. I apologize.
Excuse me? I didn't hear.
I just said I missed, I missed that decision, that three board members would decide about the survey, and I'm all for discussion, but, you know, that's all.
I think that happened, didn't it, or my?
It did, yeah, it did. I put that out a while ago, that the survey committee would bring it back after we talked about it on Monday with Larry.
Yeah, it's, the, the one point is it's not three board members.
Yes.
Yes, that's what I was just.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else? Anyone else, Michael?
I don't see anyone raising their hands or waving on their screen, so, how would you know?
I think I heard that 30 minutes ago. I know, I'm kidding. Okay, thanks. If everyone's okay, we'll, we'll get into our code review, and we have about an hour. Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Good.
I'm going to sign off. Have a good night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so short-term rentals, Fran?
Short-term rentals, what's that?
I don't know.
Okay, give me a second here to figure out what happened on my screen. There we go. Okay, everybody's getting out of my way. Okay, short-term rentals. I think we have a few things left to work on. Sorry, I was ready.
There's a couple of things way up top in purpose, a couple of Kathleen changed one.
Okay. Suggesting mode, okay. Okay, let's.
In one of them, I can't remember which one, I made, I made a couple of suggestions before I realized I had it in edit mode, so I'm sorry if I've mucked anything up.
Oh, you've got to be kidding.
You messed, seriously, okay.
Are you, is that real, Marie, or are you being sarcastic?
It is real.
Okay, there was, it was two things, and it's right at the top of one of the documents, so we should be able to find them quickly.
Not a problem. Where are we? We're on short-term rentals, number 100.1, purpose. Point B, we're just changing it from to regulate to just.
Regulate.
Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, but you can't, you can't do the deletion. You got to put in the capital R, thank you.
Got it, okay. That was that, that was easy. Okay, moving down, dwelling, a dwelling may be composed of one or more short-term rental units, and Maurice says conflicts with 100.3K, which basically says each STR will allow only one STR rental at any given time. Okay, so.
So I would just, just delete the second sentence, Fran, a dwelling may be composed of one or more.
Okay, so a dwelling is just a building or portion thereof?
Right, and, and then a dwelling, sorry, a dwelling may, can be composed of only one short-term rental unit.
Okay.
I'm going to excuse myself for a moment, I'll be right back.
No, I'm sorry, especially if you're going to eat, that's just not fair. Okay.
I wish it were food.
Of only one short-term rental unit, is that read okay for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, can be composed of only one short-term rental unit, okay. Moving down. I'm sorry, there's a space deletion. I know Kathleen had said she was doing spaces, and I reminded her that this was not the place to do that, okay. Street at the public thoroughfare, however distinguished, which, okay, so Kathleen's question knows this. Me, we cannot regulate STRs on private roads, the only one that currently qualifies under the limits or currently considered discussing is Hamilton houses on those streets are otherwise regulated by the village.
So, so, Fran, so, so you can change that to street up, a thoroughfare?
Okay, everybody good with that?
Good. Thank you, Marie.
Thank you, Kathleen, thank you, Marie.
Then we come to the number.
Okay, here we go. No more than 25 registered STRs, this is the question, okay. So we have 25, or we have 38, and then Marie did the calculation where for every eight residences and came up with 53. So Dave's question is, 25 or 38? I'm going to jump in, because I've, I've, I'm go, I'm good with 38, provided it's no more than two per street, no matter how long the street is, and I think that's the way we calculated it. So that's my vote.
So if, if you, if that is the case, then 38 doesn't fit with the street spreadsheet.
It fit with the street spreadsheet that Dave did.
Yeah, but Dave, what Dave did, didn't, so for, so for example, Garden Street.
25 residences and he has one.
Yeah.
Right. And I, and I added to the spreadsheet the street length that I got from Larry. And I still haven't been able to have, I haven't had enough time to be able to say a street with 25 residences with only 0.15 mile is too short and too dense to have more than one. But I wanted to be able to make that argument throughout, and I haven't had time to really analyze this whole thing. You know, the size of that street is tiny for 25 residences.
Yes, and, but if I compare that to Main Street, in the same distance, we have two.
But we're talking R1 and B1.
And it, it, yes, we're talking R1 and B1, but I would argue that it doesn't matter, R1 and B1. If the short-term rental permit is based upon tax lots, then it doesn't matter.
I think it should be.
It matters where the tax lots are, and if you have a business district, why shouldn't it be for business?
I think it should be by actual residences or properties rather than tax lots. Because there's a lot of instances, excuse me, there's a lot of instances where we have more tax lots than we have residences. Not a lot, but some, for example, Paulding has 32 tax lots, but only 25 residences.
Actually, that's not true. There are, yes, there's, it's true and it's not true. Paulding, sorry, you said Paulding, correct?
I did.
Okay, so Paulding is one of the longest streets in the village. It, it can be divided into three groups, if you agree with that. Chestnut to Academy, Academy to Paulding, to Pine, and then Pine to Chestnut. Pine to Chestnut has eight tax lots. They are not built out yet. But currently, one house is going up, and two of the tax lots are for sale for residences. There's no R1 involved. So in all likelihood, in another year, Paulding will have eight residences between Pine and, and 9D.
But they're on large lots, and there's no way to compare that with Garden Street. That's what we're doing.
I'm not comparing it with, with Garden Street. I'm just saying that, that if you, if you look at the, if you want to use length of the street, we can use length of the street. If you want to use blocks, we can use blocks.
If we want to use both, or we want to come to a common sense approach that doesn't exactly, you know, include every little thing, I think we could do that also.
I, I think that the, excuse me, David, in principle, I think that the spreadsheet that you and Fran came up that examined block by block is logical and rational and provides defensible reason for arriving at the number that that spreadsheet arrived at, which is 38. I understand that there may be minor adjustments that we need to make based on observation, but I, I would agree that because we, you have arrived at that number rationally, and then that number is supported by the work that you've done, I am comfortable with a higher number.
I'm only just, just clear on my position is that I'm fine with 38, but including the list, and that's where the, that's where they can only be. You know, I'm not, I'm not saying 38, because this is how we figured it out, but you can have them anywhere in the village. I think.
No, it has to be.
Assigned, assigned to the, to the, assigned to the logic and connected to the logic of the spreadsheet that you've done.
I think this spreadsheet should be, should be included, and this is where, you know, where they'll be permitted. This is how many will be permitted, this is where they'll be permitted.
Okay, the only problem is that the spreadsheet that comes to 38 did not include Okay, the only problem is that the spreadsheet that comes to thirty-eight did not include some of the cross streets.
Slide every main street into smaller blocks.
Yeah, and.
But we said eight, eight, at least eight lots.
Yeah.
So the cross streets don't have eight, dude?
Yeah.
Who, where, when?
Pine, Pine from Grove Court to Ninety. It's got eight lots.
But if you're looking at this and you want to rationally figure it out, there's huge lots and, and so you could move that to like two on Pine, on Paulding Avenue and use the whole length, just bring it to a different area and they're, and they're not built yet either, so add another one then, make it thirty-nine if you want. And maybe we, you know, we can't build, do it on, are, are those lots sold and are they ready to be built on and will they be built on?
I, yes, that is a good question. The, the, my response to that is probably, yes.
I would assume that they would, I think it's a safe assumption that they will be, so adjust the number to accommodate as needed. Does, does that get us to a resolution?
No, no, there, there are more, I, I did not do a comparison, the thirty-eight spreadsheet to the fifty-three spreadsheet, I can go back and do that.
I, in some of the streets that you have the fifty-three or fifty, yeah, fifty-three, you have like three or more STRs, or you've broken it down into more blocks, like for example, I think what you're saying, Marie, is like Mountain Avenue, we've got it divided into two sections. There are a lot more blocks if you want to in there, but we chose to just divide it sort of in half. Instead of saying, you know, Cedar Orchard, Orchard to Bee, Bee to Fishkill, whatever the heck the streets are in between there. And I don't think there's a, I don't think we have to divide it into every little block.
But then what's, I mean, if, 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 if you, if you if you think that that is the case, then what is the rationale for, for not dividing it into every little block?
Because of the varying, I feel like we're talking in circles, because of the varying sizes of the block and the varying numbers of properties, the varying, varying lengths and number of buildings. This is, this is an attempt, which is in no way unclear, because the bounds, the bounds of the blocks, whether they are exactly even or not, the bounds are defined in the document. I'm, I, I feel like we're, I feel like we're trying to solve for a problem that doesn't exist and, and it's, I'm, I'm feeling like we're stuck here.
I think we can.
Good, go ahead.
I think we can define how we want to define, if we want to say no more than two per street regardless of the length of the street. Then I think we're entitled to say that without having to measure every little inch and every little space. And I'm, and I'm good with that, you know, to say more than two on a street and I'm sure we're gonna have arguments going on when we open this up to public hearing.
I think we can just, we can, we can include the list, we don't have to say anything, we say these is where they are and our rationale when we're talking to the public, we're saying this is why. But like, you know, you know, the reason why we broke Paul or, uh, Mountain Avenue where we did was because of the cross street that didn't intersect both sides. You know, and, and the length of it and the density of it. And the reason why we did Garden Street was because it's a shorter street and although it has a lot of houses on it, they're very tightly packed together. Same with Parrish Street on the lower side, you know, the, you know, the south side of Parrish Street, it's got a a lot of, you know, of, of lots, whereas the northern part doesn't have that many, or it has quite a few, but nowhere near as many as the lower lots, so you know, there is a logic to all of it. And I think the logic for Main Street is, well, my, my feeling on Main Street is it's, it's, it's a it's a business district and if you want to, you know, kind of, you know, if you want to, you know, encourage visitors or if you want to accommodate visitors, you know, to a certain extent, you know, which is part of what I think our purpose was, then I think we're, you offer a few STRs, it's not gonna be a lot with all the other regulations we have on here. And I'm not sure if we, if we decided on twenty-five, what's the rationale for that? I mean, with any number we come up with, what's our rationale gonna be?
I just think, I think we've done the best we can with it and we should throw it out with a number and, and and we, we do have logic behind it, we've done the best we can with it. You can't really divide by every eight pieces of property, cause then that's gonna give Garden Street way too many on a tiny little street that can't afford it. So I think, and I think we have you know, maybe two or three different pieces of our logic. You know, one is, one is the density, one is the number of properties between each one.
I, I would agree. I, I, I'm for, I'm going, I'm for, and I will, I will vote on if we vote, or we need to decide, decide this. On the thirty-eight, as we have it divided, unless there's some egregious you know, error that I've made there.
I feel comfortable because it is neither arbitrary nor capricious, you have based it in a rationale. And it's a rationale I feel comfortable with.
I, I disagree because the rationale is inconsistent.
Good, but I'm gonna go with the thirty-eight, I think it's, it's the best we can come up with at this point. And we just need to move on and get this moving. So for, for now, I'm good with the thirty-eight.
Okay, so I think, I don't know where Heidi is.
Thirty-eight is fine with me, it makes sense to me logically.
Okay, so we'll place, place thirty-eight in there and see what the public comes up with.
Okay.
Or maybe, yeah, no, it says no more than thirty-eight, so up to thirty-eight is what we're thinking.
Yeah. Okay, the next question is the length of the permit. We have the permit is good for one year, Dave's arguing for more. Do we want it one year renewable for a second or do we want to make it two years?
We had this discussion last week and we decided that in the first year out, we would stay with one year. I thought we'd, I thought we'd resolve that.
We did, I think we did.
We did.
So we're good with leaving it at one year?
Fine, I just, yeah, I'm fine with that, but for the first year, see how it works. Now, on, on the, if we go back to A though, should we put, you know, per the list or per attached something, I don't think we should just say thirty-eight, no more than thirty-eight.
Per attached spreadsheet.
As indicated on attached spreadsheet.
Included, included, it's not gonna be attached.
No, okay.
Sorry.
No more than thirty-eight registered. Will this be an appendix?
If it is an appendix, it could be an appendix.
Okay, so if it needs to be an appendix, we can is that a, yes. Be, it would be appendix A, right?
No. No, the, the appendices, there's already an A, there's a B, a C, a D.
In this chapter?
I have never seen an appendix in a chapter.
Okay, then let's just leave it as, let's just leave it as included.
Yeah, we probably, probably should give it a number, Fran.
It's okay. As indicated on.
Can we leave it blank for the moment, can we put in a dash and leave it blank for the moment?
Spreadsheet number.
I would probably put it before fees. So I'd, I'd have to renumber.
Okay. What am I doing?
Do you want me to do that?
Oh, please, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. All right. Okay, now we have the spread. No, STR permit will be allowed for any property within eight tax lots on either side, are we leaving this or do you think that the spreadsheet defines it clearly enough? Or do we still need this?
I think the spreadsheet should be clear.
So if we have something at Mountain and Cedar on one, one side of the street and Mountain, I mean, Mountain or whatever it is. Orchard on one side of the, on one corner and then across the street on the other corner of Orchard, we have another one, is that okay?
Well, I, I can't remember the spreadsheet, but if, if there are two STRs permitted on Mountain, we should identify the and I think you did, Dave, because there was a question about Terry and, and Matt's, yeah. Yeah, so there's one on that, yeah, I, I don't think that.
I identified both sides of the street where it will be allowed.
But, but, okay, so, so wait a minute, before you take it out. Someone could theoretically go west of Terry and then come up from the east side where they could be within eight tax lots of them, of one another.
Or someone, someone could actually have an STR on Terry's building and an STR on Matt's building.
No.
Cause we've divided the street right there.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right, right, and that would be not allowed.
But it's a single, it's a single lot.
No, it's two lots, it's two lots, Kathleen.
Okay, I didn't know, I was asking.
Yeah. Um, so maybe we need to leave this high in there.
It's fine, it's not gonna do any harm.
Okay, so we leave that in.
Now, a question on that, what about a tax lot?
Go away.
What about a tax lot behind a tax lot?
I think we're just gonna, I mean, my, my vote is just ignore it at this point. Cause I don't know how to, I don't, across the street, we've said no. Across the street of the Agni, across the street, when you go behind, I think we just have to, we just have to give up.
Okay.
There's only so much we can legislate.
Jay does not make sense.
Only one STR will be allowed on the corner, right?
That's what we were trying to get at last time when there was a concern that if you were dividing a street into a section and there were an intersection, Marie, you raised, you raised the example of, of Grove Court, Pine and Paulding and the capacity, the, the potential for multiples lining up on that intersection and that was the, that was the suggestion to try to avoid that scenario.
Yeah. I, I agree that, that, that's a concern, I think that the wording does not adequately describe it.
So what do we need?
I don't know, let me give that some thought.
Perpendicular? Perpendicular next to each other, is that how?
Only one STR permit will be allowed on the corner properties of any street intersection.
So you can't put one on the corner of Orchard and on the corner, on Orchard on the corner of Mountain and a Mountain at the corner of Orchard.
Any street intersection.
Any, any streets.
I mean, right now, it, that.
On corner.
While we're thinking on that, could you go back to H and, and clear that one up, I think?
Temporary structure, okay, right, sorry, temporary structures, tents, trailers and RVs are not contemplated in this regulation. Prohibited for the purpose of STRs, we good with that?
Yeah.
Kathleen likes it? Okay.
Mine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is, where were we here? Corner properties, only one STR permit will be allowed. On, all right, this needs wording. We're just gonna re.
You want, Marie, you can work on that, we'll, we'll, we'll just get back, go back to that one, then we all agree with.
The intent, yeah.
This is the intersection question?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, each STR permit will only allow one STR rental at any given time.
Can I make sure that I understand that?
Which one, Kathleen?
The, the one you just read? Does that, does that tie back to the, to the question raised, I can't remember who raised it last week about multiple different parties, people, groups of people renting in a single house in one weekend, at, at the same time, is that what we mean?
Yes.
Yeah, I think what, what Dave wrote here, from Marble, Marble Town, STRs will be limited to single rentals, multiple rentals simultaneously and are permitted per home or the maximum number of units that can be registered by any property owner is one. Do we want to pull both of those, we need one of these?
So.
Or should we just add? Go ahead, Marie.
I, I think that that one is clear and, and this came up with, I was going to be renting multiple bedrooms in my house to different people.
And we told you you couldn't do that.
That's right.
Okay, so each STR permit will allow only one STR rental at any given time and I I think that's clear, it basically says the same thing. Multiple rentals simultaneously are not permitted, which is basically the same as any one given time.
Right.
Leave it, change it.
I'm fine with it, as long as it's clear to everybody.
Leave it, yeah.
Okay. Okay, STRs are not permitted above the second floor unless a CFO certificate of occupancy has been issued for that space, are we still good with that?
I, I am, no.
No.
Yeah, that was.
No, that, I, I, I submit that that's not necessary. The, the reason that that was there, sorry. The reason that that was there was a concern that anything above the second floor would not have what was required by the code. Since Charlotte has said that that's what she's going to be looking for in the inspections, I don't think we need that, I don't think we need R.
I agree.
Cause you think it is implied, it's implied by the, by other portions of the code, of the building, the building code. Say that again?
The building code will, you know, the results from the building code will restrict it if it's not, you know, compliant, you know, which we're concerned about.
Okay.
Okay, um, let me see, there's something up here that I'm trying to figure where it came from. STRs in R1 district will be required to have one off-street parking space, what are we doing with L? Is L staying or going, the one off-street parking space in the R1 district?
I say leave it in.
Yes, no, maybe.
Leave it in.
I, I think that Dave's I think Dave's concerns are valid, the point he raises, and I still have the concern that this will have unintended consequences of paving over yards in order to open an STR.
See, I'm not so concerned about unintended paving of yards because I don't really believe that the number of people who are actually gonna do that is gonna make that much of a difference. But I could be, I could be totally wrong.
I see Dave's concerns as well.
I'm not sure what Dave's concern was.
On the side there.
If somebody owned a property and data aren't required or don't have one because they're, you know, pre-existing non-conforming, that they would, you know, be penalized. You know, they, they wouldn't be able to have, have, you know, a, a short-term rental. And there, you know, if they have cars there, then with, it's a, an even swap if they're, you know.
If, if they're not there when it's rented, but if they're there when it's rented, then the consequence is that you have more people parking on the street.
Shall we?
Way and, and seeing what happens or see how people react to that, I know.
Okay, yeah, that's fair.
Leaving it, leaving it and seeing how people react to it?
I, I don't know, what's everyone else think on it?
I, I think, I think that it should come, I think that it should, should come out on consideration, I there are so many village, there's so many parcels in the village that don't, that don't have parking lots and I, I take your point, Dave, I don't, not parking lots, parking spaces, I take.
We're not, we're not saying an additional off-street parking, I mean, my house has a driveway, I'm not saying I have to add an additional one.
No, I understand that, I'm thinking about very dense small lots, dense small lots, where parking already isn't there. I continue to be concerned that if there is a, a financial incentive to create a gravel yard or a paved yard to be able to rent it, that that will happen. And I think that's as much a character issue as a four-foot fence or a six-foot fence.
Sorry, we're on STRs, right?
We are on STRs, I'm drawing a comparison, you have concerns about character and I think that paved lots is a character issue, paved yards is a character issue.
But unfortunately, there's nothing in our code that prevents somebody from taking out their grass and putting it on.
Correct, but I wouldn't encourage it for the purpose of STR.
And, and I don't think.
Wouldn't they put a, wouldn't they put? Wouldn't they put a, wouldn't they pay, uh, I'm, I'm not concerned about the paving, I just, if they don't have parking right now, I don't know why they would do that just for a sixty-day rental, you know, and, and why wouldn't they do that for their own convenience?
I mean, it's, it's a broader, it's a broader question, I think not as valid as the point that Dave raised. If, if, if they don't have, if the residents don't have a parking, why is that, why, why should their guests have to have parking, there already isn't parking.
Because we're increasing, because we're increasing the number of, cause anyway, Dave said, uh, you, you're okay with leaving it and seeing what happens with the public, I'm okay with that.
Public hearing and, uh, I know there'll be people that will be against it, so we can hear them.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, we're good, that takes care of that one. Delete the space, I'm not even looking where you deleted spaces, okay, um, S, we added a word. The host of the STR shall maintain a record of the number of guests in the beginning and ending days of each short-term rental, should we add the word contract?
No, because there's no contract. Um, we need a word, but contract isn't, I, I think we can come up with something better.
Which, which one are we on now, I've lost my.
R, R has, uh, in blue twenty minutes, I don't know, can't remember what.
Yeah, sometimes that happens and I'm not quite sure why.
Agreement instead of contract.
Does, do, do people with, who rent via Airbnb sign an, an agreement?
They, you, you sign up online and you agree to terms and conditions when you make your, when you make your reservation. Why is that, that's an agreement, it's not a contract, it's an agreement.
Uh, yeah, except that what we're asking here is they're maintain, okay, they're maintaining a record.
What?
Yeah, period, of each short-term rental, period.
Period.
Okay, works, um, host shall primarily display at all times the contract, context and you, uh, along with A-list issued by the villages, A-list or the list of emergency services numbers, is it, there's gonna be a specific list, right, is it?
Yes.
So it should be the.
Yes.
It's not a, it's not just any old list, it's the specific one we're giving you.
The, the village issued list, yeah.
Right, okay, uh, the space, okay. The village will advertise in the paper a record for short-term rental permit applications, I'm good with that one. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's in one oh four, one hundred point four A, whoops, sorry, didn't mean to do it that way, I meant to accept it, there we go. Uh, okay, moving down C, uh, lowercase C, the name, address, primary telephone, cell number and email address of the authorized agent able to respond on-site to any issues in person, is that correct, on-site?
Yes.
I just added commas.
No smoking allowed.
I, I just turned my head from the screen.
Don't do that, no smoking, okay. Um, F, proof of the STR property has been, proof that the STR property has been occupied by the personnel applying for an STR permit that works for a minimum of three years, um, two documents that confirm the STR property owner's primary residence, um, that works to confirm, okay. Proof of insurance, making progress, delete space two times. Delete space, public lottery system, from the total number of properties completed, okay, we're at thirty, how many, did we say thirty-eight? Twenty-five to thirty-eight.
Up to, right, are we, are we saying up to thirty-eight, wasn't it something?
From the total number of verified, verified applications received, yes, okay, up to.
No, 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 no.
Not for that?
We're, not for this one.
We're gonna.
We're gonna.
Oh, 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 right, right, right.
However, C is no longer valid.
If only one application, any village's drawn priority will be given, okay, this one.
We're gonna have to reword that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll put it on my list, Fran.
Okay, uh, I'm just gonna highlight this to say reword.
Yep.
Applicants reach of the solicitor lottery numbers will be notified, the applicant must select, must schedule and complete. Okay. Inspections of short-term rentals, I think we should consider adding it or at least incorporating a few things, couldn't figure out how to copy it here, so I'll email. Uh, Dave, sorry, did you email us something that I didn't see?
What's that?
Some, something about the town of Warwick inspections of short-term rentals, um, you said you were gonna email something.
Um, I don't know.
You, you did, uh, let me pull it up.
I don't remember.
Um, the email was sent to us on January twenty-first.
Warwick, okay.
It was a PDF.
Inspections of all short-term, do you want me to share my screen for a second, I don't know if I can do that. Can I share a screen, I guess I can.
So Fran, in, in reading through it, one twenty-nine dash five, inspection shall be conducted on an annual basis, we've got that in. All inspections following finding substantial conditions will be subject to the procedure set forth or violation in chapter sixty-seven, um, so we have talked about, um, unsatisfactory uh, inspections and time to get them corrected, so I think we've got that covered. Uh, the inspections are conducted by the building inspector, we've got that covered. The building is, the building inspector will arrange for the inspections, um, we've got that covered. And the annual fee is fifty dollars, we've got the, we've got the inspection fee, I think, I think we've got the inspection fee in, oh, it'll be, no. Yeah, it'll be in the master fee.
Right, uh, so, is all of this covered?
Yeah, I think that, I think everything is covered.
I think so too.
Okay, so I will unshare. Okay, go back to where we were, uh, okay, go back to here. Okay, so we're okay, let me see, once an applicant's inspection is satisfactorily completed.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so we were okay with all of what we just said.
Right.
If less than thirty-eight.
Right.
Hey, Marie, do you think we could call back to that other one, the street, instead of streets, could we, do you wanna define them as zones or something like that?
Oh, we could do something like that, let me, uh, I, I don't have, I don't have your spreadsheet right in front of me, but let me take a look at it and see if we can do zones.
Can you say that again, Dave?
That of, the problem with that was the streets and the second draw on the streets and we had zones instead or defined what the areas where we've listed are, cause so they're not streets.
Oh, I see, that makes sense.
Okay, uh, so we're changing, correcting, uh.
You need, yeah, you need to change, yeah, good.
All right, um, got the reword, moving down, moving down. Okay, trash, and we're down one hundred point seven E, trash, refuge and recycling in the bins or containers there are shall not be left stored within the public view, uh. I think we just need shall not be left or shall not be left out or.
I was asking, did we mean le- leave them or do we mean store them? Um, right, cause, cause leaving implies I leave it out too long, stored is I am purposefully keeping them in this location, I think you mean both, which is why I suggested and/or.
I'm fine with and/or, anybody?
Code already, I, I thought that was in our code, but whatever.
Then why are we saying it again?
That's what I was wondering.
Oh, that's what you're wondering, okay.
I think there's something about the app, so when you have to, you know, bring your garbage in or out or leave it out.
Well, I mean.
From the curb, that's right, it's in, it's in trash or refuse or whatnot.
It is, but I think that there is an argument to be made for having it as an element of this chapter because it's.
I, I agree Kathleen.
Okay, it's one of the things that people were concerned about in that, in the public discussion.
I would just add it to the list. Or it will be.
Okay, how about?
Just, just a question, move baby, move.
We're getting there, we're getting there, how honest we are.
Kathleen, uh, Fran, no container, container should be lowercase.
Okay, uh, oops, that wasn't what I wanted.
It's a new kind of thing.
You like that, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, that was done. That was done, okay, shall not be left and or stored within the public view, no container should be left, uh, if ever abused, those parties, delete, delete, uh, okay, we're okay with nine PM to eight AM for people coming?
Yeah.
To nine, we okay?
Compromise reached last week, right?
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
We start, um, once, we're, we're very close tonight, I'll send it off to John and answer his, a recommendation on, um, on the wording here.
What was?
Seven, eight.
What was Dave? Dave talked about indemnification in an email and that seemed like a smart thing to me. I don't see it showing up in the, in the text, where we, where, that was for, that was for this chapter, right, Dave?
Uh, I can't remember.
You, you had, I thought it was from maybe Bedford, you had found an example of another municipality's STR code that indemnified the village against.
Yes, yes, was it STR code?
Yeah, I think it was, I have to find it in the.
If an owner found operating a STR without the following procedures and regulations.
I'm sorry, Fran, can we go back to Kathleen's point for just a minute?
Sure.
It seems to me that indemnification should be in the permit application, not in this chapter.
Okay, can we pull up what Dave sent, cause it, it was a code, it was a code item that he found.
Do you, do you remember what the text?
And, um, I can't spell it, indemnification.
Pasadena.
Here it is, insurance, oh no, that's insurance.
Was it Pasadena?
Yes, Pasadena, sent January twenty-first, ten AM, the host shall sign an indemnification and hold harmless agreement.
Maybe cause I'm looking in the wrong email account, that could be why.
Um.
Yeah, all of my stuff goes in the same place.
I'll put it in the application, has everybody looked at the application, is it okay?
I apologize, Marie, I have not.
I have not either.
I have not either.
I will add it to my to-do list in between, uh, let me see.
Oh, yeah, agreement in a, agreement in a form.
Okay.
Host shall sign an indemnification, indemnification and hold harmless, agreement in a form approved by the city attorney.
Okay, so you've done, um, an STR permit and it's in the.
Google.
Okay, I'm sorry, Marie, I will go through that, um.
I missed it, I'll do that too.
We'll get, get to Marie as soon as we can on the application.
Okay.
Maybe we won't have to.
If I'm interpreting, let's see, on a hundred point ten A, Marie's saying, if I'm interpreting this correctly, the owner must follow ten point seven A through I. These are the offenses covered by ten point ten A, if that is the case, the regulations on ten point seven will be an offense that is identified immediately, correction will occur when the guests leave, so I don't think the ten, ten eight two should be listed. Okay, so I, I understand your logic, Marie, so we're not gonna.
Um, I would just take two out of there and then, but leave three in.
Right, so in other words, you're not gonna, um, throw the, throw the guest out because of an.
Right.
If the owner is found to be operating STR without following the procedures and regulations, the following penalties will be assessed, everybody good with that, take out two?
Yes.
Fence is not correct or intended.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I was reading to myself.
Okay, and then Fran, the three, the old three A, that should be, that should become three. So we've got a first offense, a second offense, yeah.
Okay, uh, give me, is everybody okay with me taking out two?
Yes.
All right, that takes care of that, that takes care of that, um, this becomes.
Three.
See if I can do it nicely. Hey, look at that, it happened.
Okay, now, now, A has to become B.
A has to become B, okay. Uh, give me a second if I can do it nicely. Nope, it's not what I wanted.
I have the hardest time with that.
I know, it is not, it doesn't work nicely.
Google, yeah, Google does not do numbers nicely.
No, I'm just, so that's when you do this.
Ah, yes, yeah, it worked, that worked.
Yeah, cheat for the time being, and somebody else who wants to play with formatting it at another time, sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. Okay, all right, seriously. Okay, any person found to be operating STR is defined in this chapter without the proper, yeah, that's not what I wanted at all.
Suggesting.
I know Heidi, it drives you nuts. Really does.
I was trying to suggest.
There is, there is a way to do it, like if you tell it to follow the previous one, but it doesn't always pick up. Okay.
Yeah, it's not working.
You got it.
Okay, not touching, okay, and B, wherever it becomes, it'd be for both B, the second offense, what happens if the person continues to operate an STR, um.
I'm good with B.
Okay, any person found, uh, without the proper will be assessed the following penalties, first offense, five hundred, requiring to remove tenants, um, within three days of the discovery, the resident will also lose the ability for a year. Second offense, a thousand, required to remove tenants within three days, additionally, all forfeit rights to use the property for four years, everybody good?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're making great progress, okay, enforcement. Okay, it should be the duty of police department of the village of Cold Spring to enforce this chapter, that seems logical.
Kathleen. Marie answered my question, so that can go away.
This can go away?
Yeah, Marie answered the question.
Okay. Um, now we've got appeals, any person aggrieved by the provision of this chapter may apply to the village board for relief, who shall hear the matter and make final decisions. Okay, this is where the indemnification we talked about, there's your note, Kathleen.
Yeah.
But that's gonna go in the permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but I would move, I would move indemnification up to, um, uh, uh, above this, in the, I would move indemnification up to the application.
Oh, and in the way that. References, the indemnification that will be signed as part of the.
Right, one oh, one hundred point four under C. That's what I'm, I'm, I'll work on it.
Okay. Okay, this becomes, ladies and gentlemen, we are, as much as we can do with STRs.
Right on.
So it's gonna go to, it's gonna go to John, right, Marie?
Um, yes.
Then what's the next steps, do we schedule a public hearing? When do we do that? So when? If we, if we schedule it before we send it to John, then we sort of get to put a bomb onto him.
Kind of not some bad thing. Kind of a not so bad thing. Uh, what, what are we, where, are we pausing? What are we?
I don't know, we can either, do we want to ask John and then, and have his feedback or, or schedule a public hearing as soon as we?
I would, I would prefer to do former.
Yeah, I think, I think we should let John take a look at it and tell him we're in a hurry.
Yeah.
Because once we finish this, then we can finish one thirty-four.
All right, yes. Okay.
So ju- just to wrap up, um.
I'm sorry, sorry, we finished this, we don't finish one thirty-four. This has to go along with the old one thirty-four.
Okay, all right, okay, sorry.
And, and I'm just working on the old one thirty-four.
Just to, uh, wrap up of where we stand, um, Marie and I have gone through all the comments on, um, everybody who looked at the cleaned and okay, mostly, um, Heidi and Kathleen. Kathleen, you'd be extremely happy to know that we took that ugly word out that you hated.
You took out putrescent?
Yes.
Oh, that is the biggest victory of my lifetime!
No, 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 it's not, not putrescence, it's putrescible.
Putrescible!
And, um, Heidi, you will know that we took out, um, something about solid waste. I'm sorry, I had a bunch of notes and I forgot it.
I read through the, um, I, I, it gave me the notification, so I did see.
And we took, um, the wording that was confusing was confusing because Kieran had given it to us that way, so he had totally apologized. Because Kieran's our insurance man, who you will soon meet with me. Um, so he reworded that for us and we took care of that. Uh, there are currently.
It turns, it turns out that, that wording was also found in chapter one oh eight. So we made the change to chapter one oh eight as well. One other thing I'd like to call to your attention, in, um, chapter one hundred, um, the last, um, appeals. Um, in discussions with John, uh, he felt that the village should have some process where if a board, uh, an appointed board, uh, renders a decision that the, um, if the applicant to that board does not agree with that decision, the applicant needs to have a process, uh, a path to appeal the decision. So one hundred point twelve is going to be added to chapter one thirty-four zoning to the section in, uh, to, I think it's twenty-one, which is planning board, and sixty-four, which is HDRV.
Okay, so, uh, we currently have nineteen chapters that are in the pre-hearing section that are locked for any more edits. On twenty chapters that are in the cleaned and okay, that basically need to be looked at for grammar and punctuation and that kind of stuff. And a bunch of those I've committed to. And there are seven chapters, well, six after tonight, chapters that we are still working on. Fences, building construction, brush gra, brush, grass, and weeds, trees, V and T, vehicle and traffic, and then, and zoning, um, and that's it. So we're, we're not doing too badly. What is our deadline, Marie? The end of March?
Yeah.
And so what do you, what, what is, what chapter do we want to look at after fences, so we can?
Forty, forty, building construction.
Did you say that and it went right over my head? Sorry.
Forty.
Brush, I am super excited to talk about brush. Oh, building instruction, less excited than, sorry.
And then after that brush.
I think construction's gonna go fairly quickly.
Right, because, because Charlotte has reviewed that, right?
Two things, three things on, on chapter forty. Um, chapter forty, yes, Charlotte has reviewed it. Chapter forty, John has also reviewed it, and chapter forty was constructed based upon the New York State Department of State model code for building construction.
So in other words, we don't have to look at it at all.
I, I think it would be a good idea.
We'll, we'll look fast.
I think I had a question or whatever, but I don't think it was anything.
That's it, that's all I've got.
Yeah, for the, uh, public hearings, i- is, is the application part of what people review or no?
For, for the public hearing, what I would, what I would recommend, we have a number of new forms that have been created as a result of the code update. Uh, so, for example, we have a steep slopes permit form.
Right.
Uh, there is a, a, a short-term rental form, which will have to go through, go, which I would recommend be part of the public hearing associated with short-term rentals. There are, I think, a couple of other forms, so they should, in my opinion, they should all be part of the public hearing.
So like the list that we're generating, does that necessarily have to be in the public hearing?
Uh, if, if we make it part of the chapter, yeah.
Okay.
So the, yes, the short-term rental chapter has to have the permit application with it?
When we do the, in my opinion, when we do the public hearing for chapter one hundred, as part of the public hearing materials, we should also provide the application for a short-term rental permit.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Good to go.
Hey.
Time is up.
Excellent. Uh, motion to adjourn.
For a second.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Good night, all.
Night, all.